Just had a couple of announcements we got. A couple of things that's not on our agenda today that'll fall under our miscellaneous event here on item seven, so we'll save that. We'll mention our first Friday event for August, it'll be happening on the second day of August. That's our first Friday of the month and we'll have downtown activities together around the square and I hope everybody will come out and enjoy our first Friday events and usually have good entertainment and a lot of good fellowship. There'll be some vendors out there probably with food on the square in addition to some of the restaurants, maybe providing extra hours and service during that time. So let's enjoy our first Friday events and make them special if we can. During the last legislative session, ourselves and one other city, maybe you and, got a legislative act passed so we wouldn't have to have a referendum of our people to be able to offer beer on tap, beer on draft. And I'd like for us to act on that at our next meeting so that the rest of the requested this could now be commuted and offered this way. We do have to ratify this legislative act that was passed and adopt it as a part of our city's ordinance system. So I'd like to offer that up as an agenda item for next Monday night and just wanted you to know that that'll probably be on the agenda.
Now what are you speaking about here? Will we sell beer, beer in can or draft?
Yeah, now you can go in a restaurant that's licensed to offer it and they can pour it out of a bottle or a can. They don't want to be able to pull a lever and serve their customer out of glass, you know, just that's what they're requesting and we've got a legislative act that's allowed us to offer that to our restaurants that are licensed. So I'd like for us to go ahead and take care of that business at our next meeting.
But I probably don't understand this.
When we went west, we didn't provide for beer on tap or out of a keg.
Okay, okay.
So it's against the alcohol ordinance right now to serve draft beer?
Yeah.
So is this going to amend the alcohol ordinance? It'll just be like an insert or will the alcohol ordinance have to be rewritten?
Good question, I don't know. Other than, I know to offer this to the public, we would have had to have an election, which is very expensive. And Tracy was, had been asked by another city to do this for them and he called me and said, "Would you like me to do that for our city so we don't have to pay for the sales?" And he said, "I'm willing to do it." So we went forward on our behalf, but we haven't put it in our ordinance yet and we're going to do that in order for the cafes to be...
And we say it either way, beer or draft, and we say it both of them.
If we amend it?
Yeah.
Yeah, if they don't either way, at that point right now, they've still got to pour it out of a bottle or out of a can.
So how much additional revenue are we looking at if we allow draft beer? Or is, does draft beer cost, does it cost more if you go in a restaurant and buy a glass of beer than it does if you buy a can of beer? What does the city stand to gain by allowing the draft beer?
More goodwill than anything.
Okay, so no money, just goodwill?
I don't know that it'll provide an extra...
I don't know that it'll make any difference to you and up to us, would make any difference to us or to...
Well, that's, that's something that maybe we'll, we'll answer those questions before we vote Monday night. I'll, I'll have to really rush up on this. I don't buy beer at the store or in the restaurant or wherever.
I haven't even 30 years.
But to answer the questions, I'll try to get, I'll try to get those questions. I know that some of the cafes have asked to be able to sell it by pulling the lever and serving it out of the keg.
I figure it's going to cost them less. The keg.
Not the keg.
Yeah.
Yeah, I figured. But the customers are requesting it. I, they think, I guess the ones that use it think it tastes better out of the keg.
Well, you can go like a kind of group and get a picture of it.
Yeah, I've seen...
I just don't see any difference in letting them sell either one of them. If you're going to sell one, because at least that draft, they can't carry it with them. They have to drink what you're going to drink there in the cans.
You can't carry any of it with them?
They can't, but it don't make any difference.
And we'll, we'll get the questions answered about the revenue and how we do our ordinance, whether we rewrite the whole ordinance or just include that as a portion of the amended ordinance. I'll find out about that. We write those two things down, revenue and ordinance. If there's any other questions that might be putting up to, before we vote on that issue, revenue and the ordinance are the two things that have come up at the table today. I'll be finding out about those two things. And then if there's other questions, we'll try to get them answered. On the item two, I just wanted to let y'all know that the bicentennial traveling art exhibit will be coming to our city. We have invited this back in the very early spring and we were selected as one of 15 sites that will be hosting this traveling exhibit throughout the state. It'll be leaving us September 23rd and going to Huntsville all the way down there to be the next stop. So we've been in cities like Montgomery, Mobile, Birmingham, some of those larger cities have already had it and it'll be moving on from us. There's 17 registered artists that'll be traveling throughout the area, our area, and doing canvases while they're here. And we're going to have on the Friday, this Friday, from 11 to 1 o'clock, we're going to have a little reception for them. And I understand Ann West is going to announce at their in-service meeting that we're hosting this and she'll have the features when she's able to let them go to hopefully come by and see this. Hopefully it'll be an interesting and very eventful thing for the city and that will help us to celebrate our 200th anniversary of our state. So we're real proud they've selected our community as one of the 15 stops. Andrea had to go to Birmingham on some business today. She was going to bring us our list of things we'd need to complete the Sullins House. But while we're on that subject, the Chamber has met with us last week expressing an interest to make it their permanent site for the Chamber of Commerce. They'd like to move into one of the rooms and occupy it. I think it'd be a wonderful thing myself to have a state better care of our property. Houses sitting empty just don't do well. And I feel like Ms. Williams, our Chamber President, said that she might could, they've been having activity two days a week and she might could offer Monday, Wednesday and Friday now as, as days to serve our community better, have more activity from the Chamber, more office time. And we might could talk to the Historic Society or Arts Council or somebody about answering our phone one day a week. I'd like to see us have four days a week activity at the Chamber Office and so maybe we can have some, some good things starting up there. First of all, we'd have to work out with the City Council and myself as to whether or not we're willing, under some circumstances, to host the Chamber Office there and allow it to move there. They've expressed interest in moving there as their permanent headquarters and I just wanted to lay that on the table today for y'all's thoughts. We want to act on it today, but Andrea is going to come at our next work session, give us the list of things that we need to complete the house and get it in good condition.
Well, if they're going to pay anything to use it, are they just going to use it and us pay for everything?
That's, that's something...
Pipe bills, hooky, pension?
That's something we'd have to decide on. We would have to absolutely fine tune this and work out all these things, Gene, that's good questions. I haven't said any basic rent on the, or didn't throw out anything on the table to them as far as, I told them we might have a warm-up period to get used to one another and then decide, you know, what we'd do going forward. So we just have to decide as to how that's going to work if it works. But they did come and meet with us and expressed an interest to go into the Sullins House as a headquarters.
Are they renting this building where they are now?
Are they renting it?
Yeah.
They rent it with someone, I think it's housing two places, maybe the Arts Council and then we're renting the same building maybe. How much, how much is it? Do you know Tammy?
I don't know.
Okay. I think there's, is there three offices in that little building?
When they were on the front street, it was the Arts Council and the Chamber. I don't know if the Arts Council is still with them on the side street or not.
Okay. We'll, we'll have them to have a joint meeting with us. Hopefully we'll have them and Andrea at the same time and we can discuss all the issues and the logistics of what we want to do. One of the things they'll need is, they'll need a computer hookup and a telephone. Those two items are not in the building at this point.
So we've got something on our hands that's going to cost us a good bit of money to me. Is that guilt to us with the Sullins House or what was that part of it?
Well, the, the Sullins House is not faring very well, sitting empty. Rodents are infesting it, squirrels and rats and we're having holes gnawed in the walls and things like that. I believe we had it occupied to be doing better. It'll be kept clean if they're in there too and probably is, for every event, it needs a major cleanup. And if we're ever going to have any tourist activity in the building, I think we're going to have to have somebody there to have the doors open where people can come in and see what we got. The Chamber is a very valuable function of our city. They do six major events for us every year plus things on the fringes that we don't give them credit for, but we know that the Chamber's going to mean a lot to us now and in the future. Some cities get lots and lots of mileage out of their Chambers and I think we could improve on ours if we had them more exposed and, and really had them working for the city instead of just doing the little side things that they agree to do.
Wouldn't anyone take over that Sullins House?
I don't know if anybody's interested in taking it and paying the bills on it, Gene. That's, that's the key is, well, I think we could get someone to quote, "take it," but they wouldn't want to take ownership and responsibility for all the deals and expenses that go with it. We'll come back to this item, just keep thinking on this and all the questions that you might have in mind when we come to it. It'll be two weeks from today when we have our next meeting and we'll try to have both the Chamber and Andrea here discuss the potentials of fixing up the house, getting it complete and then whether or not we want to house the Chamber in it. So I'll be thinking about that.
Has the Historic Society completed what they were going to do in it as far as the security system and the things that they agreed to do?
This is item four, is an invitation that each of you from Doug Jones, he is a contact of the city, asked to do a town hall meeting at 5:00 PM on August the 5th. That'll be the same date as our 6 o'clock council meeting. He wants us to be there if we can and we'll move on to City Hall. At 6 o'clock, we'll have our regular meeting while he wraps up with the people. At 6:30 or about so, he wants to come on to City Hall and talk to all of us and any other elected officials that want to join him here at the City Hall for more of a private sit-down with any government or elected officials. And we'll try to have a little reception in his honor while he's here. He wants Democrats and Republicans alike. He wants the tough questions. He said if anybody has criticism for him or tough questions about Washington or what he's doing there, ask them. He wants to be able to answer them. He says he's coming here to assess the needs of our community. And his Phil Man and I, Jose Perry, got in the car and we rode and I showed him places that we want to improve along our corridor, where we'd like to have some water projects, some other infrastructure we need and he took note of that and just taking it back to the Senator. He's, has selected Hamilton, Alabama as one of the sites for a town hall meeting. And I guess he's the first sitting Senator in many years that's had a town hall meeting in our town. So he's hoping to see 100 to 150 people out there and he said, "I'm not looking for just one party to show up. I'm ready for the tough questions." Just run them on. So everybody, and if you're listening on the camera, you're invited to come to the Doug Jones Town Hall meeting at 5 o'clock, Police Station on August 5th. And it'll be in the auditorium and we hope a good crowd shows up, a representative crowd that come and ask questions of Senator Jones. And of course, he asked today for me to send him the logistics and the demographics of Hamilton. And I sent him as much information as I could think of today about our size, our schools, our hospital, our industrial parks, our exits sitting on, all that information. And I talked to him about the things we don't allow. So we're hoping that he's interested in trying to help our community. We'll see. Today, you may have noticed in the paper, Kenneth Cochran's comment, he thinks the new tax for the jail should be of over the people. And that subject keeps coming up as a way to pay for the new jail, is adding another cent sale tax to everybody in the county. And I hope that that doesn't happen. I don't think it'll be healthy for our retail trade in our town, our county. And I really hope that the people, the law-abiding folks don't have to come up with the money to pay for the jail, you know? Looks like that's a little penalty to me as for the good folks that go and spend their money on retail to have to have part of it turned over to pay for a place to keep the people that break the laws. I know we've got to have a jail, but I hate to see it paid for in that manner. So I don't know what y'all think about that. It's just an item I thought we might think about. Jimmy Pendley talked to me about two weeks ago and he said some of the officers had reported to him that these 2011 Dodges that we own are getting dangerous to drive a little in, that the front ends of them are becoming shaky when they're driving, especially at higher speeds. And they're requesting that we replace the rest of those cars. I was hoping that maybe we could consider in our new budget, he gets asked for four cars and I was hoping that we could consider at least two cars per year, the next couple of years and not put it all in one budget. But he's just told me that the officers, I've told him the front ends of those cars are getting risky, especially when they have to drive them at higher speeds. I hope we never see another police car with the word Dodge written on it. I just, I want a Ford or a Chevy going forward. I understand those little Ford interceptors, SUVs are less than the Towels and very suitable for working out of them, so we might consider some Fords. We'll need to get reports on them and see what...
Well, take any Ford, was it good or not?
The Towels are a nice ride, but they're expensive. I think we could get...
They've had some issues with the Fords along the way, where they've had exhaust come inside the cabin, had a couple of police went out with a gas out because of it. So I don't know if they've worked those problems out yet, but they did have that problem a few years ago when they first came out with them.
Okay, good to know. There's a man's work and police work, he understands these things. We'd want a report card on them. We haven't decided to buy it yet. That's just something, that's a new request that's come in.
They're based off of the four Taurus, is what they're based off of, the frame size.
Yeah, this has come in as a request and not from Ronnie, but from Jimmy has just told me about it. I just wanted to bring it up today and I'll be thinking on that. It might come up in budget talks, it's going to be in the next few weeks and couple of months, we'll be setting a new budget. So think on those things. On our miscellaneous items, I wanted to tell you about our new Christmas tree. Mountain Brook Village, Mountain Brook Mall has gifted us a commercial tree. We asked for it over a year ago and the mall manager wouldn't give it up. They changed managers, got a new manager. We reached out to her and she said, "If you'll pick it up, you can have it." So it's at our fire department upstairs and the tree and the transportation didn't cost us anything. We had a man volunteer to haul it for us on his van truck, free of charge, didn't charge us a penny and furnished the driver. Driver worked helping our man load it. I did send a couple of the wreck guys with him to load it up and we've got it here so far, other than using a little bit of manpower of the city, we don't have any money in it. It's over a 20-foot tree, commercial tree, probably would cost 15,000 new and it, all the parts are with it. The bells that hang on this thing is four and a half to five feet tall. So you can get some idea of how big a tree it is. Twelve of those bells. And it's going to be impressive. We want to use that for our, to kick off our Christmas season each year and have our lighting ceremonies. We'll be using that. And we're real proud of the tree, it's a gift. Somebody said there's no free lunch, but so far, we don't have any money in the tree nor the holler.
It's not set up yet.
I do need some...
I don't want no money.
I bought one one day without the decoration.
That one we can't use in the center of wherever it is.
This one's got branches, lights, bells, it's got the bells, it's got two boxes of lifetime ribbons, gold ribbons. It's, it's going to be a gorgeous thing.
How come they want to give it away if it's all that good?
Well, they're, they're going to a different decoration. It's time to update their decorations.
And we'll be updating ours for that.
We did some...
I mean that.
We did some updating and we, we really looked good last year, finally our lights were so much better.
Yeah.
And we concentrated them and I think we can still do some, some good things and have low-budget decorations. We've had a little situation a couple of times lately, the state prisons redoing A&amp;I and they've been hauling load after load of things to our dumpster down here. And sometimes we're so full, we can't take everything they bring, we have to put them off a little bit and they get a little aggravated. So if y'all hear any rumblings about the state prison refuse, they're pulling all those barracks down there and hauling to us, we're taking it as much as we can systematically, but sometimes they bring us more than we can handle and we have to let them bring it back another day. But they've got a, they've got a service that serves the state prison, they pay for a dumpster down there, commercial dumpster, but when it comes to this debris, they bring it to us and we pay to get rid of it. So I don't know why we're getting it, but we're getting it. And it costs us per ton to get rid of that stuff. So we're doing them a favor to take it anyway, but as best we can, we're handling it. And the guy called me the other day, he said they've overwhelmed me, I couldn't take it off, I asked them to bring it back Friday, this is on Wednesday. I said, "Well, you know, I'm going to go with that. That, you're in charge of that area, I'm just going to go with that decision." And he said, "I'll pile it somewhere on the ground or somewhere, we'll have to pick it up with a front end loader or something," but he said, "I don't have room in the dumpster." And he said, "These other people that bring me stuff, household stuff, like they're supposed to, won't get to use our dumpsters." So, and those are the ones that pay us. These are, these people that pay us a garbage fee, but they have things sometimes they need to haul off in their own vehicles to get rid of and they bring them and then we're already overwhelmed at the dumpster with this prison stuff. So if you hear any rumblings about that, it's just, that's the way it is. You know, we're not trying to be hard on the prison, we respect the fact that they have some jobs down there and we get some override off the people that work down... We respect the fact that they have some jobs down there. We, uh, get some override off the people that work down there and things like that. But they don't pay us a fee. They don't pay us a garbage fee. The prison don't. They have their own garbage disposal, commercial.
They got a contract out to do the repair down there?
I figure BFI picks up or somebody like that picks up the prison garbage. But we're taking, we're having to carry it to, uh, Landville in Franklin County, what they're bringing us, when we get rid of it by the ton. So, anyway, it's just by heart to know how to refuse them. Just one of the things that we dealing with the best we can. Still getting lots of complaints on our potholes. Uh, I talked to Mike this morning. They're paving over in, uh, Oak Hills this week. Uh, they've done several streets already. We've taken in one new street. The man waited ten years for pavement. There's three houses on this street. It's a dedicated street, but they've kept up their own road for ten years. And we finally gave them pavement this summer. That was Billy Wayne Carter, the mechanic, Dickinson, uh, what's his name? Jerry Dicker.
Dicker.
And Pennington, uh, Pendleton, uh, over there. Terrell Pennington, yeah. Their road, they were, they were a dedicated street, but they've maintained their own road and they've had a request in. We finally got to them this year. We did, we refreshed Maywood, uh, Christian Camps Road. It was, uh, it was in terrible shape. Then we got it, uh, resealed this year. And they've done several other streets already, but they've got three or four streets they're working over there in that, uh, housing area. We got plenty of work to do, believe me.
Well, are they going to, they got a big pothole over there at the track, the walking track. There's not but one big pothole there. And the only other thing they got there is the street coming in, the drive coming in off of the street. They need to do something with that, but that big pothole down there, oh, it's, you know, wouldn't have that, but it's about that big and you know they get bigger. And it's about that deep. It needs to be filled. I don't know. I tried to get a hold of Mike and couldn't.
Is that, now, is that between the old guard armory and the track?
Yeah, yeah. It's, it's right there and, yeah, across the road from Armory.
Okay, alright.
And it's just one big pothole and it's not a big, but it is, it's the only thing there, that and the driveway getting in is, you know, it's pretty rough.
Alright.
But it's not a lot to fix, but that big pothole out there, not only is, is it rough, but it looks bad too. And, uh, that's all I could see over there that was, uh, I thought that was very small. Stuff that's much bigger than they are over there.
We're gonna try to work that road at, uh, Sizer Drive that goes between the, the prison and the nursing home.
Yeah.
It's in terrible shape. We're gonna work it this week. I'll try to get that Armory, uh, road fixed too this week.
You're talking about them with the nursing home then? Yeah, I was supposed to mention that to, what's his name too? I never had my name again.
We're gonna get, we hope to get that before we.
Couple of people read it out. It must be pretty tough from what I've heard, that it really needs it.
We've, we've got lots going on. We're, uh, road maintenance. It's, and we're hoping to hear back from our plan. It's in Montgomery being the final approval stamp. Put on it for our paving, our wheel paving, but we hope to get that back by the first of the week. We had, uh, a pre-bid meeting yesterday for the reg sale project where we're doing the, uh, water and sewer improvements over there. And the gas district's gonna go in there and do some work, I understand, while we're in there. Move some of their utility lines too. But that job's on them. We included in our job. We had a man from South Carolina to get to us yesterday. We had a, a good representative crowd. They think they'll have up to ten bids on that. We heard from our ARC grant. We got it finalized today. So, we got both grants to help us fix the Lowe's, uh, road down there on thirty-five. We've got the three hundred thousand in hand now, so we can, uh, we've got firm agreements with both entities. ADECA and, uh, ARC for those grants. So, things are moving a little bit forward in some areas. Uh, Angela couldn't be with us today. She's prepping for a cold knock to be early in the morning and I know she's having fun. I gave her some good advice.
For a cold knock, preparation.
Sorry, trying to straighten.
Amy's not sure.
Didn't even send that up.
You can mark through that, can't you?
I didn't hear.
Oh, you didn't hear.
We're live.
She did have an item she wanted me to present today. Um, occasionally we've had some, uh, shred it services to, uh, come here and, and do some shredding on site. But we could have a vessel, uh, delivered to us and all of our departments use it. And they've come here, it looks like this right here. It's in your book, I think. This is a shred it vessel and, and what we would do, we would have a serviceman and it'd be about sixty dollars a month and it would cost the city about seven hundred and twenty dollars a year. Some of this stuff is court stuff. Some of these documents are, uh, city records that are old and we, we can, at some point can, uh, get rid of them. She's requesting we consider using the shred it service and, uh, protects us from anything getting out into the public that shouldn't be and it safeguards us in a lot of ways. I'd wanna make that, uh, agenda item. So, it'll be a, uh, annual billing. So, uh, not be a monthly billing, but it'd be ongoing till we stop it. So, we kind of like a contract, I'd think.
So, is the garbage can the locked container and the little box shreds it and you take it out of the little box and put it in the garbage can? Or what's the locked container that they pick up every month and replace?
We would use the locked one. This is for stuff that's not sensitive.
Okay. So, they're picking up the box every month?
Yeah, they'll take the box and shred it. And then they'll burn us an empty. And they'll change these out. But they wouldn't go and do it on site. They'd pick it up in the truck, take it to their shredding place.
Do we not have a shred? What we've been doing with, with the shredding?
They come here and shred when we gather up a lot of it. But we think it would be more economical if we could do it the other way. Without having to come here on site.
Oh, we've been telling them to come here on the site?
It says that they come twice a year, but this says that we can, if we do this monthly, documents will then be destroyed either on site or at their secure facility, whichever we select. So, so I'm guessing this little box is just a holder and not a shredder. But I don't understand about the garbage can.
She mentioned all the departments would use that one box. Everybody that has sensitive items that have to be, um, destroyed would put it in that box.
And that's how much a year?
Sixty a month. So, about seven hundred and twenty a year. That's for them to services once a month.
In some places they require a separate can for that, just like a garbage can.
So, now they're coming to the old city hall and everything from current city hall has to be hauled over there. But so now with this new, the box would be here. So, the police and everybody are gonna have to bring their stuff here instead of this building taking their stuff there?
Well, the box could be where we put it, you know. I'm not saying the box gotta be here. I guess she had in mind for the year. Melissa's here to talk to us. She just told me that she's put a letter in everybody's thing. But I don't know what, whether she had in mind to keep the box here or.
Well, if the court system moves here, everything would be here except the police.
Yeah.
So, it would make more sense to have it here, whereas now it's been even split.
Hope get the court here as soon as our magistrates are trained. I don't wanna bring it here until we got our support ready for it. But I'm hoping to move them in about three weeks to a month, let our girls be finished enough, their training and be fully ready to give that support. And then I'm gonna get them together where they can be ready when, when they're needed.
How's, how quickly are we gonna send out information or how are we gonna notify so there's no?
Well, we'll, we'll not, we'll not do it where we have confusion. We'll move it in a sort, we'll move it in a sort of, um, pattern where we don't cause a lot of confusion. We, we don't need that. I want it to be, you know, productive, not counterproductive when we do it. And we'll be sure that we get proper notices out to all the people that have to use the magistrate and the sonny and whatever. But, uh, she just wanted everybody to consider that. It, it's, it's not an item that we have to act on immediately, but she wants y'all to consider using shred it, um, with an on-site container instead of them coming twice a year. It's rather expensive to do it that way anyhow. Wade, let's talk about what me and you've talked about, about a little bit, about our cemetery mowing. Bring that to the, to the table today and let's talk about it.
Well, me and, uh, and, uh, Mr. Johnson has talked about on the city cemetery, instead of our people having to take out from their jobs what they do and go over there and mow and weed eat and do all that stuff, maybe put it out and let somebody, you know,
Contracted?
Contract it out and let somebody else take care of it. Cause it seems like if you're taking our people away from their regular job to doing that, you know, uh...
Costing more money than it would to contract it out.
Right. I, I, I think that's what it'd be, it's costing more money than what it would be to let somebody, you know, contract it out. And, um, and it, so... They say they have to, I believe they say they, well, they're mowing season probably a couple of times a month, you know, have to do that. And it's probably costing roughly, uh, what they, you know, paying them to do it is over five hundred dollars a pop. So, you know, and it's taking them away from their regular job. So, if we could get somebody to, you know, let people, let some of them look at it and some of them say, well, I'll do it for so much and, you know, and then pay them and then we won't have to worry about it. And then they can go on with their, their work.
Yeah, there's two or three people around here that do that.
Yeah.
What's?
So, Mike says it's, we're spending five hundred dollars a month mowing the city cemetery when we could be spending that time somewhere else.
Yeah.
It's that much labor.
Actually, it's twice the, so it's five hundred, over five hundred dollars per mowing session.
So, a thousand dollars worth of pay is going, how long does it take to mow that?
Well.
Long time.
Yeah, it, you could, the mowing part is, you know, you can mow part of it, but then the weed eat, that's what's really... I believe he said he had four people over there, three or four people over there weed eating. You can't get in there with a mower, so you've got to do it with a weed eater.
So, we've got the man that actually mows and then the, uh, the work release that are doing this?
No, no. It's the people that's, that's.
Working for the seed?
Working for the seed.
Why aren't the work release weed eating? Do we not still use them?
We don't be using work release with the street department now.
Might need to check into that. That might be cheaper than, than contracting it out.
Well, and.
We used to. When did we quit doing that?
Uh, probably been a year and a half since the street department's adding work release.
Hello.
I don't think he's been gone.
Hey, let me call you back. I'm in the city council meeting. Okay, I'll, I'll.
How come they stopped that?
Well, we had some inherent problems with, with that and took a lot of supervision for the, for we're working all over the place.
And, and you know?
We gotta haul them everywhere they go and our work's not always in one location. It's just hard to manage them. Plus, some of them didn't wanna work with us very well. We had to take them back to the camp, set them up.
So, where do we have work release working? Because we're still paying a lot for their lunches. So, how many do we have working and what departments are they working in?
We got work release at, uh, police station. We got work release.
The one man that does the janitorial work?
Work release at the wreck department.
How many at the wreck?
Two or three.
And now Mike didn't hire any part-time summer help, did he?
No.
So, that might, if he had hired part-time summer, I'm just trying to see what'd be the best way.
Why don't you, why don't you check with Whitey, Wong, and kinda give a price for him? Then you get one or two more that's cutting yards all the time. Now, you've got, what, four or five people, I think, that can cut yards all the time. They got their own equipment. You don't have to furnish the equipment or anything and see what they would charge to do that. And we wouldn't have to be hauling, wouldn't be using city lawn. They'd be using their own stuff, I guess, is what I'm saying.
I really, I really think that some quarter of them, we might even wanna just put it in paper and offer that job up, the all comers. I'd like to see Whitey and Avery and everybody's in the business coming to the table.
Sounds like a pretty good bargain. I know they pay two hundred and fifty dollars every time they mow the Brutus Cemetery, you know where it is. It's one, I mean, that's five hundred dollars. Two hundred and fifty dollars every time they mow it.
We got several men that are in this kind of business and, you know, I think we need, because there's a chance that we could damage tombstones and things like that, I'd want somebody to have some kind of an insurance, liability insurance policy to back them up. They're gonna take this job on. There's almost chances we can have.
So, would we be responsible for them if we contracted out? They would be a contract employee that we would be responsible for?
Uh, I'd want the person doing the mowing to have a liability policy. I don't know how many claims we'd ever have. Might not ever have one, but it could, it could get expensive.
How many hours of tech to do it?
How many hours it takes to do it?
We don't know, we wouldn't have any idea.
Well, if it's...
I, I forget it takes our people a full day when they go over there.
Yeah, I think they go...
It must cost, take more than that if it's gonna cost five hundred dollars a time, and they're making fifteen dollars an hour, and that's just eight hours, so... What's eight times fifteen, that's eighty.
But he figured it out, and they, they, they go like twice or two half-days, you know, and, and... I believe he said four of them at one time for working, you know?
I figure when they get their garbage route run, that's, they had struck that cemetery when they're gonna finish up, and speak it's off the truck. It's, it's, uh, it's a chore, it's a pretty good chore, I know, and, and we'll get some complaints if we ever get behind, if it gets a real rainy time and we get behind any at all, complaints pour in, cause people keep a pretty good eye on it. I went over there, it's amazing how many soda bottles I found empty out there around the graves, candy wrappers that didn't blow in there, they were fouled in there by somebody, went in there with a bottle of fuel before they got out, pitched a drink bottle down on the ground, and candy wrappers and things like that, you wouldn't think they'd trash up the cemetery if they do. Have to keep that stuff picked up, lambs that fall off trees, flowers blow off the graves, and gotta keep those bins emptied out every so often, we got some little bins down behind, on the backside of the cemetery. So, yeah. As Wade says, a lot of it has to be weed-eated, it's not laid out just to be mowed.
Can't mow it, you gotta get in there a week a year and...
The, um, memorial gardens was laid out with the low ground level markers, and most of it can be mowed.
Mowed, that's in the line, and you, you know, you...
Go between them, and get a lot of the grass with mower, this one's intensive with flavor, cause of the way it's laid out.
I'm just thinking it might be just cheaper to hire somebody part-time, ten dollars an hour, to mow that and keep that mowed, and then mow other things. Instead of contracting it out, then we could get more for the... I mean, if it takes, well, they work part-time, they work from six to twelve, or twenty hours a week?
Well, I believe, I, I think we...
Nineteen hours a week?
I think we can go up to nineteen hours without offering retirement and insurance and all the benefits. We, uh, we have custodians for our building, so custodian for the cemetery might be, or the part-time. Of course, you, I don't know if they'll come with the equipment, the equipment, we may have to buy weed eaters and lawn mowers for them.
If you don't wanna do that, being up, hiring somebody, they'll have their own tools.
I got three weed eaters, I need Seth, man.
If they're hired, the work force won't be sure. You know, don't have to buy ten thousand dollar...
And how, I'm, I can't remember, with the cemetery board, there's strictly, how, how does that read? How, how is that? There's, they just say where the graves are and the city's in control of everything else, but what about their money that they collect, or are they in control of it, or is the city, and is that money what's gonna be used to pay for these, uh, potential contracted cleaner uppers, or how does the, how does that money? What's, what are the specifications of that money?
All the maintenance is, all the maintenance of the cemetery is done by the city.
So what is the money that they collect for the, uh, for the site and the, what is that used for? What's the money in their account used for?
I think some of it's used at decoration time, I don't know exactly. There's a fee, if you, if you buy a grave now, you have to pay a fee, so many hundred dollars, but I don't know how that money's used.
So, I mean, is the account that it's in like a perpetual care that's, that's drawing interest, and that interest can be used for the upkeep, or how, how does that work?
Uh, I don't think it's a perpetual care cemetery, I think, I think the perpetual care is paid for by the city.
So what does the cemetery board do with the money, that's my question?
Yeah, that's right, where, where does it go to?
We're keeping it up.
I don't know. It's, it's operated under the same system it was operated under when I came here.
Oh, yeah.
Um, the Frederick family's kinda been heading up the, um, cemetery, uh, plots and what's available, where the plots are, that kinda thing, and I think they allow Angela to look at their account records anytime she wants to see them, but I believe they've got their own checkbook.
Well, that's right, cause they charging so much to be buried over there, too.
Yeah.
And what do they do with that money? They, we keeping it up, there's nothing else to do, cause that fella in there's not gonna do no moving around.
I don't, either, or anything yet.
He ain't gonna move.
I don't know if they, I think they, they open it or anything like that.
What's, what's the ballpark number for that account?
I have no idea.
I think it's six hundred dollars a plot, that's what they charge for it.
Or how much, how much is sitting in it?
Seems like I paid five hundred dollars, it seems like I got two plots over there. I, I, but it just seems like that's how much, that could be more, now, that's, I bought those two a long time ago.
Well...
Don't you get that thing cleaned up good, cause I'm getting pretty close to moving in.
I'd like, I'd like to get Mark Johnson to come and, and give us some blah, blah, blah of how this goes, and we'll find out more about...
The cemetery fund has fifteen thousand seven hundred four dollars and eighty-eight cents in it. So... So are you proposing we use this money to contract the cleanup, or we need to know what this money's specified for? What can this money be used for?
Okay, that's a good question.
I think that's gonna be theirs, eh? I wonder who's in control of that money? I mean, really, I, I, I've never...
I think Tina heads up the, the bookkeeping on, on the stuff now, but she interacts with Angela, she, she knows Angela keeps running total of everything.
I'm pretty sure each family, when, I mean, if they bury somebody, they gonna get the money to dig the grave in with the other, so, and then they gonna have to pay, you know, somebody digged, but they gonna get it at that time, that's the way it works.
Or you can buy it in advance, I bought, I'm not over there yet, but I bought two.
Yeah.
In April, and so my money's probably...
But then when it comes time to open the graves, you know, they call it, then they gonna, the family, you know, they pay for that, unless it's in with the, the deal, I mean, the, you know, I don't know.
I don't know, but I just know that I bought two plots. Maybe pay the funeral, or all that.
Yeah, I think that, um, it, pay in with the...
Open the grave and everything, yeah.
I'm, I'm sure that we don't ask them to write us a check when we mow, or we, we've been covering the entire process of mowing.
Oh, I'm sure, but, I mean, my question is, if we're gonna contract this out, what, what is this money used for? What, what, what do they do with it? I mean, so, and if we're gonna have to contract it out, is the payment gonna come out of this fund? Or is it gonna come out of the general fund, or, you know?
Um, I'm, I'm almost positive that they won't, it's never come out of that fund, so I can see it starting now.
But that's the city cemetery, isn't the city in control of that cemetery?
We've never contracted the cleanup out, as far as I know, we've always done it.
Yeah.
So, but if we're looking to contract it out, what are the restrictions on this fund? What can this money be used for?
Who's in control of that fund is what you're asking, then you get to find out for, for, who controls it.
Well, anything that we're showing a total of expenses and, and, uh, income certainly is, is showing up in our books, so um, if we carry it as a total in our, and show it as a total of funds, it's gonna be in our care. But there's certain things that that money's always been used for, but pretty much they let us know when they're gonna spend some money on this kinda thing, I think they come here and get a check. I believe the checkbook's here, if I'm not wrong.
Well, who is they?
That's Tina Frederick, Hugh used to do it, but she, I think she, she's not as active, she's taking it over now.
So she's in control of writing the checks and things out of that checkbook, of that fifteen thousand dollars?
I think she comes to see Angela when she needs to spend some money. They don't spend very much, I don't think, you know?
No, no, they don't need to with us doing everything over there. I mean, we always have, I mean, only thing that could be is that five hundred dollars we paid for the grave sites.
Yeah. What Wade and I discussed was a way to free up those people that were paying wages, good wages and benefits for, and, and try to get it into the hands of somebody that might do it for less money. That was our goal, and we're not doing it to disrupt the, the system necessarily, we're just trying to say if we keep those men patching streets, but need to be patched real bad, and doing other things instead of running weed eater, we might be better off. I don't, I don't know exactly, um, what they're spending money for here.
Really, but I think, really, you just need to look into it and see what's best.
Tried to change up anything to do with the cemetery, it seemed to have a system when I came here, and I've stayed away from intervening in that.
Yeah, but we've had a problem with that since I bought my lots and things, there's been some problems.
Okay.
I won't get into that either.
Well, we'll, we'll look at it then and, and see if we need to revamp some of this, and, um, Wade and I just had a, a pretty simple discussion on it, that he was, um, Mike and him had talked about the maintenance of the cemetery and got to thinking about how we might free up some labor that could do other chores or other things other than mow and weed eat. And, um, so I guess our motive for bringing it up was more to free up Mike's men and, and get them doing something productive for our city, and let someone that's in the mowing business have that job. But we, you know, we don't have to make any changes in it, it, it's working the way it is, it's just probably a, a little more expensive if we do it, and it might not turn out, we don't have any bids yet, we might be surprised what it would cost. If we put it out for bid, we might wanna do it.
Yeah, it might be, yeah.
You can like it, yeah.
Then again, somebody might do it.
Today, it's just a discussion item that, that has to have no decision today, but we wanna think with y'all as to whether or not you thought it was a good idea or not.
When is the city keeping it now?
Yeah, all together. The street department, per se, is doing it now. I don't think we have anybody that's out of, outside the street department that works over there, I don't, I've never known of anybody. Uh, we may in the past have had some inmates in the cemetery, but right now, we don't have any with the street department. This is a good, good discussion, we, you know, this is something we'll come back to, and I'll find out more about, um, the ins and outs of the, the way that operates, I haven't tried to make any changes in it, because I thought the system was in place. I know we have a, a mapping system that, uh, the cemetery, I think that was paid for out of the cemetery fund, and we don't have it finished yet, it, we can't lay it out on computer because we got a few more plots, it's gotta be measured and located for us to finish up the, uh, draft of it. But Angela's been encouraging them to get that to her so she could get this people that we bought the program from to, to lay it out for us. And so far, we haven't got that information.
There's not a whole lot more lots left over there, it's my understanding, there, when we bought ours, way back a long time ago, we were looking for another place to expand to, because about all of those lots are used up, it's over there, there's not many, I, there may not be any left, now.
There's, uh, there's a chance. A few months ago, I had a contact with a, a man that has some land and, and has a friend that has some land, and he said they had a couple of lots that the city could own if they wanted to own, if they tested right, worked right, and everything, and worked for the cemetery, that they'd let the city have them, so if we ran out of property, I haven't tried to buy those lots yet. But it'd be something we'd wanna consider for the future.
It would really need to check to see how many is left up there, too. Cause I, I know that this, this should be quite a few years back, that, uh, that was talked about then, just about out of lots.
It's been a pretty popular place for burial, uh, for area citizens, and people want to come back here and leave there, cause they moved away when they were younger. I'm hoping we don't run completely out of space, able to accommodate. Okay, folks, uh, anybody else wanna throw anything out today? August the tenth, we're supposed to get our, uh, key back from the contractor up to our rec center, we couldn't finish it by the thirty-first, we're supposed to be finished by the tenth. So we're gonna hopefully, hopefully hold that date, um...
Are they incurring any penalties on that?
Haven't started any penalties at this point.
Was their time not at the end of June, or are they not a month over?
We're probably at least a month over. Felonies start on the tenth.
When, when did you think of that, that Friday night thing is gonna be starting?
The second, second of August.
That'll be, yeah, yeah.
This weekend.
That'll be, yeah, that'll be this coming Friday.
Yeah.
August first, Friday.
It's gonna be hard.
Court square.
Up on the court square.
Go ahead.
Get your tap shoes and everything ready and...
You have to buy a twenty dollar ticket.
Yeah.
In advance, twenty dollar ticket in advance, and I'm setting.
Can't make, can't make a strong...
You know, somebody would.
Sometime with a real charcoal grill going up there, and some of the hamburgers rolling off of it, man.
No charcoal, it's hard to bake.
Makes you think of Bedford Better Beef Market.
Yeah, cause it gonna be kinda like it was before, just some, some kinda entertainment band playing or something, and stores open.
Chris Williams is playing, yeah, Chris Williams.
Chris Will.
Be like, man.
George, we better all wear a cowboy hat, so he knows that cowboy hat.
Yeah, and boots, and, boy, I'm gonna go prepared.
I'm standing pretty good, yes, that's what I've heard, I don't reckon.
The guy can ask his name. He, he's good.
You dropped it.
What's the starter?
Mine this time.
Six o'clock's the official.
It's just, it's from seven till nine at this time. It's starting.
Cause it's hot.
I guess. I'm pretty sure it's seven to nine.
Is this August 1st you talking about? Court square?
Friday night, the second.
Oh, it's the second.
Cause I, I don't know when it starts compared to how.
You just walk on over when you hear the news.
Right, when I, when they cut loose, I can walk on over.
Nice to come up and see me and we can crawl down. Round my back so we're.
There you go.